Well, first of all, we've got a presentation on the financial audit. So Ms. Bolt, turn it over to you.
If you got the presentation, that's. So you just received your copy of the annual report or the comprehensive annual financial report, so I know that you'll all go home and read this cover to cover and there'll be a quiz.[44.80][44.80](laughing) Kidding. But so actually, our financials looked really good. We were pretty close to what we presented as far as the September financials, but some of the things I want to just talk about that are highlighted in this report. And before we get started with that, I also want to introduce our auditor, Jamie Lambert, and he is here from BMSS, and he's just going to give a brief talk about our audit, which is also included in this booklet.
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing? First, I just want to thank Tina and the entire finance team for their work with us. They helped the audit go very smoothly. Their organization and knowledge was instrumental to helping us to get this done in a timely fashion, so very grateful for that. I'm happy to report that we did not encounter any difficulties during the audit. There were no disagreements with management regarding financial reporting or auditing matters, and there were no material adjustments. Any journal entries that were made were either small items that we made for the financial statement purposes or provided by the finance team during their closing procedures. And none of those would have caused any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We prepared two reports for the City of Hoover. The first report we prepared was the single audit package, and we didn't have any issues with that report. There were no findings related to that audit. And then the second report we prepared was the comprehensive annual financial report, which you have there in front of you. And if you look on pages 14 through 16, that is our independent auditor's report, which is our opinion letter from BMSS. The opinion letter did not change from last year. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that we can give based on the audit procedures that were performed. I just want to thank you all for continuing to use BMSS for your audit. We've really enjoyed our relationship with the city, and that's all I have today. I'm just going to turn it back over to Tina so she can complete, so she can go through her report.
Thank you, Jamie, and it is a pleasure, and they did help us out a lot this year with the audit, and we appreciate that, and helping also to get this financial report prepared. So these are just some of the financial highlights. These are found at the beginning of the Management's Discussion and Analysis, or what we call the MDNA. So assets exceeded liabilities by 308 million. The city's net position decreased by 2 million. I know that sounds like a, because it decreased, and we'll talk a little bit about this. We're looking at overall totals on these, some of these reports, not just the general fund, which is what we focus on when we look at the monthly financials, is the general fund, but this is overall total. So even though it was decreased by 2 million, this is much better than the previous year, 2019, where it was, where it actually decreased 10 million. So looking a little better. So unrestricted funds of 4.6 million are available. Governmental funds reported an ending balance of 81.2 million. Total net positions was 296 million, and revenues increased by 1 million. And again, that was due to that reclassification of the CARES Act. It was 3.5 million, and when we reclassified, it actually increased our revenues. So just to give you an idea of how this audit report is laid out, so first, we talk about the government-wide financial statements, and this is a broad overview, and we do this to give a better understanding based upon a private sector business. Because we do fund accounting, so we are reconciling this to be more like a business-type statement. So one of those statements in the government-wide is the statement of net position. It basically compares assets and liabilities. And on page 37, this is a reconcilment to what many of us know as the balance sheet. The statement of activities is a comparison of revenues and liabilities. Again, this is what we would consider the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, or what we used to know as the income statement. So this is reconciled on page 39. So the statement of net position you will find on page 33, but this just kind of gives the highlights of that. So we have our assets, current assets. Again, we've broken this out in governmental activities and business-type activities. Our business-type activities basically are sewer. So our total for current assets is 115 million. Total non-currents, current assets, these are depreciable and non-depreciable assets. Our total is 413 million, and so our total assets are 528 million. Deferred outflows of resources, that is basically a deferred consumption of resources. What we are showing for that is unamortized losses on unfeased warrants, pension plan, which is based upon an actuarial report, and OPEB, other post-employment benefits, which is based upon an actuarial report as well. So those total 25 million liabilities are total current liabilities are 33.5 million. Total non-current liabilities, which include debt, workers' comp, property and casualty, our pension, OPEB, and then compensated absences or leave, our employees' leave when they retire, is 198 million. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, 198 million is our total liabilities, or 232 million. Deferred inflows of resources, this is basically an acquisition for a future period of revenue. What we are showing, or what applies to this, is a property tax levy and a pension reconciliation, I guess you could say, based upon an actuarial report. So therefore, our net position is broken down into our net investment in capital assets, which is 298.6 million. We have restricted funds for public safety, municipal court, general government, highway and road improvement, and those total 14.7 million. And then unrestricted, as I just mentioned, were four, is a 4 point, and that actually, yeah, that is a negative 4.6. So our total position, net position for governmental is 296 million. Business-type activities, 12.5 million, and their total is 308 million. So for the statement of activities, on page 35, and this is a little bit different to read, just because of the way this report is laid out, but this is how we report it, and this is a standard format. So in the middle is where you find your revenues, and we have fees, funds, charges for services, operating grants and contributions, capital grants and contributions. And then in the first column, you have your expenses, and this is broken out by total government activities, business-type activities, and then our total primary government. So when you look at this, we have all that compared to what is broken out for expense or revenue or netted in those last three columns for government, business type, and then our total. So for total governmental activities, we had 116.3 million negative. And total business-type activities, we had 581 negative. And again, we've got other revenues down at the bottom, which will offset that. So our total primary government net expense revenues is 116.9 million. So when you look at the bottom, you're going to see revenues and other items, change in net position, net position at the beginning of the year, and then where we ended up at the end of the year. So our total general revenues and other items, that includes taxes, our transfers ins and outs that we do, so that nets to 114.9 million. Our change in net position was a negative 2.45, 2 million and 45,000. So our net position at the beginning of the year, where we started, was 310 million. Where we ended was 308 million. Now, as I said, even though that was a negative 2 million, our change in net position, it was better than the previous year, which was a negative 10 million. And all that's being said with COVID happening and a decrease in revenues. So looking at our fund financials, another part of the audit or your report is laid out in fund financials, and these are what you typically will see during your monthly financials, because we actually do fund accounting. So our governmental funds, and that's inflows and outflows, we have 21 of those governmental funds, and those are laid out as a combined statement in the annual report, and then they're also laid out separately, so you can do comparisons there. And then we have the proprietary funds, which is the business-type activities, and we have six of those funds. So looking at that, and again, this is the statement that most, and it's on page 38, but it most, well, it is basically the same type of statement that you get with your monthly financials. It's usually the first page. So you are looking at your total revenues versus expenditures, your financing sources or uses special items, and then the change in fund balance. So when you look at the general fund, which is what we typically focus on when we're looking at the monthly financials, the only difference is, is I want you to point you to the net change in fund balance. When we reported year-end financials in September, or I think we reported those in December, but our net change in fund balance was 12 million. Remember, we reclassed those CARES Act funds of 3.5 million, so that's where the net change came to 15.1 million. Capital projects, our net change in fund balance was a negative 9.3. Again, some of that is due to funds we are expecting to receive from ALDOT, that we're holding, the projects that aren't closed out yet. So all of that is not what we typically will owe. And then some of our, or our non-major governmental funds, and again, those are laid out separately in your annual report as well, is a net change of negative 2.5 million. And then our total government funds overall was a positive 3.1 million. But again, when we look at our finances, mostly we look at that general fund, because that's how we operate. So we were able to add 15 million to our general fund. And as we've talked before, we're working on investing some of that and looking at some of the things, you know, some of the projects that we just talked about on our mid-year budget review. So looking at the proprietary fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net positions, again, as I mentioned, there were six funds in this. So you are looking at your operating revenues versus your operating expenses, non-operating revenues and expenses of transfers out and change in fund balance. So our business-type activities are our sewer and redevelopment fund. Again, we don't usually have much activity in the redevelopment fund. If you're, if you notice this transfer out of 1.7, most of that was for the ERP project that we're currently working on. So that's the change there. And then in our sewer, we had a change in fund balance of negative $426,000. So you see the, where we were at the beginning of the year, where we were at the end of the year. Then our, some of our non, these are our internal service funds, and again, those are laid out separately in the annual report. That's our workers' comp, property casualty. So looking at those internal service funds, we had a change in, we didn't really have much of a change in, well, I think I left that off, the change in net position. But our beginning position was 2.2 million, negative 2.2, and our net position end of year is 3.7. So you see the change there. And then lastly, at the end of the annual report, you will see notes and supplementary information. The notes to the financial statements provide additional information that are actually very important to understanding the financials. Then you have supplementary information that provides information for our pension and our other post-employment benefits to employees, and those non-major funds are broken out in that area, too. And then lastly, is the statistical data. So that's our population, all types of, you know, lays out the different taxes that we have and what those rates are, and so a lot of other beneficial information. And that's all I have. Any questions? I know you haven't had time to go through this, but have any questions for now, or if you have any questions later, just please give me a call.
Ms. Bolt, I know I speak on behalf of the council and thanking you and your staff. This is probably one of the heavier lifts each year in putting together this document, and it's vitally important, not just because it's required by law, but because it's good for public viewing and council usage. So thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Bolt? I'm certain after we agree, there may be some questions.
Absolutely. Just give us a call. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll now move into our consentative items and begin with Resolution 647021. It'll be an alcohol license for Hometown Fair LLC. Ms. Dickerson?
Yes, neither the chief of police or the zoning director have any issues with this request.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Dickerson or the chief on that item? Next item is Resolution 647121, resolution authorizing the mayor into underground easement agreement with Alabama Power. Mr. Aldaka?
Yes, sir. This is standard easement agreement between the city and Alabama Power. They're placing an overhead power line to underground power lines that cross in city property of Starling.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Aldaka? Resolution 647521 is resolution amending Resolution 645421 to name all cities in formation of the Cohaba Solid Waste Disposal Authority. It's my understanding Mr. Rice may be joining us remotely. Mr. Rice, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a little bit of housekeeping in relation to the establishment of the solid waste authority. At this point, we need the council to approve the original incorporating members, and you'll see each of those municipalities listed. They have all either approved or positioned to approve their membership by this coming Monday night. And this is a sort of a housekeeping action that'll take place each time a new municipality elects to join the solid waste authority. We'll be back with a similar item on each agenda subsequent to a new member joining.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Rice? We'll now move to the regular agenda. Resolution 647221 is resolution declaring a weed and other vegetation nuisance at five different properties. Mr. Martin or Mr. Mack? Mr. Martin's here. Looks like we have some frequent flyers on here, Mr. Martin.
That we do. It is grass and weed season, everybody. So let's, let's get to it. All right. Yes, we have a couple of properties here that we're taking a look at. First on the list, we've got 2039 Arnold Road. Just to give an update on that particular one, the violation still persists. So we'll be moving this one forward. Next one we have is 312 Shades Crest Road. And as of today, we saw that there was an effort underway to get a handle on this particular location. So lawnmower was parked out front, looked like it had already begun work. So we are hopeful that when Mr. Mack joins us Monday night, this one will be taken care of. Next up, we have 1139 Camelot Circle. And this one, we have an update. The violation persists. So hopefully, we can get some attention over the weekend. If not, Mr. Mack will be here to join us to give us an update Monday. Next up, we have 1770 Diodera Drive. And I will note that as of today, for this particular location, it was cut. Yard was cut, and I think this one's going to come off the list for Monday night. Without going into too much detail, I had a chance to speak with the neighbors, the next-door neighbors here. They tell me that the occupant of the home is physically incapable of keeping this yard up. So if there's any service organization that does this as a specialty, that may be a good address to have on their list. But it is cut. And then 425 Shades Avenue, I believe this is a repeat offender. Went by this particular location late last week and found that it was in pretty rough shape. Appears to be an abandoned lot. There is an old foundation on the site, but nothing else but weeds. So we'll have an update for you Monday night if something changes over the weekend.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. Resolution 647321 is resolution for the levy of rates for sanitary sewer services provided by the City of Hoover. Mr. Rice?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. We've been looking at, typically, you know, not every, pardon me, not every service that the government provides pays for itself or generates any kind of profit, but certain things like utility services are intended to be on an enterprise basis, which means that we should at least cover the cost of operating that service. And unfortunately, we've gotten ourselves into a situation where we no longer cover our costs to operate the two sewer systems that are owned by the city. Mr. Jim Marshall is here with us with Jackson Thornton. They have revised the rate study that they originally performed just a few years ago for us. And as you can imagine, the situation just continues to, to de-escalate for us in terms of our rate recovery. We're no longer bringing in the money on our rates that it costs to operate the system, and thus, we have zero retained earnings to maintain and repair the system. We do have a looming list of capital projects that are necessary, just general maintenance and upgrades, but also things that will be necessary to comply with more recent EPA and ADM regulations. We're still in a situation where we get very, very high ratings on our sewer system from, on both of our systems, from ADM. But in order to maintain those high ratings, we've got about $9.6 million worth of capital that needs to be done, and at this point in time, we don't have any way to pay for that. So I'll leave the details to Mr. Marshall. I do want to thank Dr. Middlebrooks for his active involvement as the Public Works Chair, and he has slogged through this with us, and he understands it, and has guided us along the way as to how he thought the council might want to approach it. We don't relish the idea of increasing any kind of user fee on anybody, and this is not intended to generate any quote-unquote "profit" whatsoever or support any other area of the city budget, but just as a business principle, it's just, it's just time to reevaluate these rates. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Marshall, and then we'll all be available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you. An audit report and rate studying one night. Y'all are brave, brave men. Really, this slide, this first slide is something that Tim Westhoven spoke to the last time I was here, which was in November of '17. And the one thing I want to point out that's, in my opinion, as a rate consultant, the most important thing is rates have not changed in 17 years. The regulatory environment in which your sewer system operates has changed pretty significantly in the last 17 years. With additional regulations come additional expenses. All right. Very briefly, typical objectives of a study. Number one is to make sure you have enough money to operate the way y'all see fit. And right now, as Mr. Rice discussed or mentioned, you're not in that position. My, part of my job is to help y'all make adjustments to your rates in order to get there. And when I talk about rate adjustments, do as little as possible to your rates. As little impact as possible to your rate payers in order to achieve, to meet the goals the way y'all want to operate. Balancing that need for revenue stability with fairness and equity, as Mr. Rice mentioned, as a public service entity, there's no profit motive. We're not looking to make money. We're simply looking to operate and maintain the system as they are now. Balancing that with ability to pay, ideally, your rates are simple and understandable from both an administration standpoint and a customer standpoint, and then you want your rates to be defensible. Why are your rates what they are? And, you know, the answer that, well, that's how they've always been, isn't really a good answer. So that's, that's why we were engaged again to look at this. Quick overview of the process. First step is to determine, with management's help or staff's help, how much money do you need to operate? And we're looking at that on a cash needs basis, right? So how much cash needs to come in the door? That's, we're paying operations and maintenance expense. We're paying debt service, which includes principal and interest, not just interest. So we're a little different there from, from the financial statements that were just discussed or just presented. And then how much do we think we're going to have to reinvest into our system? If you think about it, depreciation is not a cash need. You're not writing a check to Mr. or Mrs. depreciation every month. But what do we anticipate that we need to do to maintain the infrastructure that y'all have in place? And then we look at that, well, who's causing this? Once we've established that target, who's causing us to incur that expense? Well, that's your rate payers. Your sewer customers are the ones that you're serving. They're the ones causing you to incur that expense. So we look at your billing statistics. Who uses your system and how do they use it? You have two rate classes. You have a residential class and a commercial class. Your residential class makes up 96% of your bills, right? So they're 96% of your customer base, but they only represent about half of your volume. So you have 4% of your customer base, or your commercial entities represent the other half. So a commercial customer, an average commercial customer, uses your system completely differently than an average residential customer. And their costs that would swing either way based on that. So again, it's establishing the need, and then looking at your customers and how they use your system, and then using that to allocate expenses to them. Again, with the intent of having your customer base pay their fair share. And that's really step three, and step four is why we're, why we're here this evening. So what was the target for the period? O and M expense of 2.3 million, debt service, which includes principal and interest of 1.5, and then rate-funded capital are the money that y'all want to use from cash flow to reinvest directly into the system to improve your facilities, whether it be a lift station, pump station, any work at, you know, out on the collection system or at the treatment plant. So we have total revenue, you guys have total revenue of just over, or revenue requirement of 6.1 million. From that, we back away other revenue. That's late payments, interest income, basically anything y'all get from anything other than collecting sewer, so that your rates need to generate 5.8 million to fully fund the revenue requirement established above. For every dollar that y'all need to bring in, 37 cents of every dollar is going to pay O and M, 38 cents of every dollar is being directly reinvested back into your system, into your infrastructure, and then 25 cents of every dollar is going to pay down debt, which that money was borrowed to build out your infrastructure. All right, so again, we have that total need of 6 million there on the left, and all right, so between your two rate classes, who's causing us to incur our expenses? And you see, the residential class is probably about a bit more than half of your system need, and then commercial class is a distant second. Again, your residential customers represent 96% of your customer base. Recovery by rate class, and this, we have a 50, 60-page document, but this sums up everything we do as succinctly as we can in one slide. In an ideal, perfect cost-of-service world, the system, which is at 71%, is at 100%. So for every dollar y'all need, y'all are getting 71 cents on the dollar. Your residential class, 60 cents on the dollar, and your commercial class is paying 86 cents on the dollar. So that 29-cent shortfall is 1.8 million dollars. Okay? And then the 60 cents on the dollar from residential, well, they're the vast majority of that under recovery at just under 1.5 million. So you're 1.8 short, just under 1.5 of that from the residential class, 355,000 from the commercial class. And as I said at the outset, this has probably been a slow glide or slow descent since there hadn't been a rate adjustment made in 17 years. Costs have gone up, so it's just gradually looked worse and worse. So I'm not recommending a 1.8 million dollar rate increase in one year. You know, the hole wasn't dug overnight. We're not going to fill it in overnight. But I do think significant action is very much warranted, and I do have a plan for y'all to consider to get to full recovery, to get to, to get to 100% across the board. Again, you're at 1.8 million dollars short, and what that represents is that your average residential bill needs to go up $26.12. That's, that's just to your average residential customer. Your average commercial bill per month should go up $137.54 to get to that full freight, so everybody's paying their fair share. That's not a one, that's not a one-year lift, right? I mean, that's a, I've recommended, after, after several conversations and meetings with, with staff, a three-year approach. So what does that look like? Well, you take the 1.8 million that you're short, you need $600,000 of additional revenue each year. That's pretty basic math. The under-recovery on residential, splicing that, dividing that by three years, is roughly $486,000 a year of additional revenue. What does that look like per customer per month, right? So that's an $8.71 increase per month per residential customer, one time, two times, three times, to get to that, what did I say, 26.12. Commercial applying the same approach comes out at just under $46 a month to your average customer. customer. All right. This, this tells what I think is a, is a pretty important story, in that it costs you guys $24.61 a month to have a residential customer on your sewer system before y'all collect the first unit. Most of the expenses of running a utility are fixed. Salaries, benefits are fixed. The truly, y'all's truly variable expenses are going to be the power bill at your plants and chemicals. The more you're treating, the more you're pumping, the more electricity you're using. And the more you're treating, collecting and treating, the more chemicals you're having to use before you discharge, right? I mean, so those are really the only truly variable expenses. Well, you guys do not have a customer charge in effect, right? It's just purely volumetric. So a one-unit customer, and y'all charged by CCF, which is roughly 748 gallons, but a one-CCF customer costs you guys $24.61 plus the 4.27. So you're at a $30.88, excuse me, $28.88 cost for that one-unit customer, and you're collecting 4.58 right now. What this, let's see if this laser works, doesn't really show up well, but the blue line is your cost to serve on a per-unit basis, right? The red line is where you, is how your rates or how your revenue is coming in right now. So right out of the gate, you're, you're somewhat in a hole because there's no customer charge, and y'all are very unique with that. We work with over 100 utilities primarily throughout the southeast, and every single client we have has a customer charge. Again, fixed expenses, of which most of your expenses are fixed, should be offset with fixed revenue. I mean, debt service, you're paying that, you're paying that every month, regardless of what you're collecting. You can't call the bank and say, "Dry month, we didn't have much coming in, can we delay payment?" Doesn't happen. Or it doesn't end well. I'm sure people have asked. On a volumetric side, it's costing you 4.27 per unit, and we're looking, this is the residential class, residential class alone. It's costing you right at 4.5, excuse me, 4.27, you're collecting 4.58. So there's a little bit of a margin there, you know, we'll say in round numbers, 30 cents per unit to eat into a $25 hole. Takes a lot of volume to do that. Your average residential, your residential class isn't going to hit that. So at, at full implementation, what I would like y'all to consider is, is just in three equal bites, increasing, one, establishing a customer charge on the residential class, and we'll get to commercial here in a second. Establish a customer charge to get, at the end of a three-year implementation or three steps, to get to $13.06. And increase the volumetric rate by $1.64 over the same period. That gets you to full recovery based off the need as established by, by staff in this study. What that looks like from a, from a rate impact, from a bill impact, again, at full implementation, that eight-unit customer is your average residential customer. It's costing you $59 a month to serve them. You're currently collecting 36.64. This would get you to 62.82. To help, you know, it's not ideal, but again, it brings the money in because we're not getting to that $24 customer charge. So we're, we're, you know, we're higher-end users will subsidize the low end. But again, in my opinion, the most important thing is to get to financial sufficiency. And that brings in exactly the right amount of money that's, that's needed. On the commercial side, same picture, just a much larger disparity in that typically residential users have a pretty tight bandwidth. There're not going to be that many outliers. The way y'all's commercial class is set up, you have, you know, a couple of strip malls with dress shops and minimal users, and then you have some rather large entities that use a good bit. So whereas on the residential side, we're trying to get half of the revenue, that shortfall, that 1.8 million, we're trying to get half of that in the customer charge and half in volume, we're trying to get 25% out of the customer charge on commercial and 75% of that shortfall recovery on the, on the volumetric rate. So that ultimately, at full implementation, that gets, it's a $34.38 customer charge along with a 61-cent increase per unit on the, on the volumetric rate. What that looks like to your average customer is about a, you know, an increase of your average resident, or excuse me, average commercial customer of about $130 to $160. Average usage is right at 1.68. Again, the intent behind this is to merely recover your costs. There's, there's no profit at all. But looking at those rate adjustments, again, in, in three steps, it gets you right in line with where you need to be based off, based off the target that we had established in this study. And that's the end of my, my initial pitch. I'll take, entertain any questions, comments, and explain whatever I, I can to help.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall?
I just want to thank Alan, city staff, and Jim for all your, your work through this. I appreciate y'all slogging through it for a minimum impact to our, to our residential and commercial customers, to get us to that 100% recovery so we can remain a sustainable system. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
All right.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 21-2531, which is a second reading of the first reading we just had moments ago. This will be phase seven of the property for Everly annexation. Ms. Dickerson, nothing new to add to that item, I don't suppose?
There is not.
Okay. Any questions about that item? Next item is resolution 647421, annexation 90-day property known as Everly PUD. Of course, that's just the continuation of the seven phases, correct, Ms. Dickerson?
That's for the 90-day. This will get the last phase, and this takes in all the property.
Yes.
Plus that last little bit up to the best city limits.
Very good. Any questions on that item? Next is resolution 645721, a second reading for the abatement of nuisance due to weeds and/or grass at 4547 Highland Crest Circle. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. President. As far as we know at this point in time, this is still a go. We still need to abate this particular location. If we have an update over the weekend, Mr. Mack will share it with us on Monday.
Very good. Make yourself comfortable, Mr. Martin. You're going to be with us for a little bit. Any questions for him on that item? Next item, ordinance number 212519, for the pre-zoning of 2560 Wood Meadow Lane from Jefferson County R2 to Hoover R2. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. President. Let's see. Pulling it up on the overhead. All right. This would pre-zone property at 1873 Mayflower Drive. Let's see. I'm sorry. I've skipped ahead, I think. Pre-zoning.
Yeah, this is the pre-zoning of Wood Meadow. There you go.
All right. There we go. 2560 Wood Meadow Lane. This is currently a doughnut hole in our city limits, completely surrounded by the city of Hoover. Property to the north and west, zoned R1 single-family residential. Property to the east and south, zoned R4 multifamily. This is approximately 2.5 acres that the property owner would like to annex and develop for residential purposes. The proposal for the pre-zoning is R2, which would have a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. They have laid out a, a concept for the property that would meet the development criteria for that R2 district. Be glad to entertain any questions, comments, or concerns related to this.
Questions for Mr. Martin?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shaw?
And just to be confirmed, this is comparable with what the county currently has it as, correct?
That's correct.
I know we'd gotten one email from a resident concerned about if they can, the drainage and things like that, but just to be clear, this can be developed as-is in the county specifications. And actually, our requirements for drainage are probably a little more stringent than the counties are.
That's correct. And of course, we would be looking for any development that comes on this particular piece of property, not only to meet our zoning requirements, but also our subdivision standards and our stormwater requirements.
Correct. So I just want to make sure everybody knew this is not really a change in, or increase of density or anything. It's really just bringing into the city under the current specs.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Martin? Now we're, moved to our first readings. We're going to set public hearings for June 21st. A lot of items for planning and zoning. Resolution number 646921 is actually a resolution for the abatement of nuisance weeds and/or grass. I assume that's some of the five addresses we heard previously.
These are some additional addresses.
Additionals, okay.
I do have good news. It appears from our, our documentation that 1858 Burning Tree Circle was dealt with, and we closed that particular case. Be glad to defer to Mr. Mack on Monday for additional information on that particular piece of property. But as far as we can tell, 905 Shade Brook Circle and 2242 McGuire Drive, those two properties still need abatement.
Okay. Very good. Any questions, Mr. Martin, on those? Next items, ordinance number 212527, would be a first reading for the zoning of 1873 Mayflower Lane.
Yes, Mr. President. This is one of a series of zoning cases where we are zoning property into the city of Hoover that was recently annexed. These are very small pieces of property, and the zoning that is proposed is commensurate with the zoning of the surrounding properties that were previously in Hoover. So the Mayflower Drive site proposing R1 development, or R1 zoning, that is in sync with the other properties surrounding it.
Any questions, Mr. Martin?
Just to confirm, we're on 2527, correct?
Correct.
So it says here it's to R2? I don't recall that.
Should be R1, single-family residential.
Might have gotten conflated with the other one. It's got, I don't recall this being R2.
For Mayflower.
Maybe it's got typo on the agenda. Just, if we can check the ordinance documentation, please, to ensure it's correct on that. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm showing R1 on the ordinance.
Thank you, just a typo on the agenda. Thank you, sir. Next is ordinance 21-2528 for the zoning of 1868 Wisterwood Drive to R1. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. President. This is property immediately to the south of the Mayflower Lane property. Same thing here, annexed in and zoning of R1 in, in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Next is ordinance 212529, the first reading for the zoning of 2316 Teton Road to Hoover E2. Mr. Martin?
All right. This particular location on Teton Road, recently annexed, looking for a zoning of E2, single-family estate residential for this particular location. That is commensurate with the neighborhoods surrounding it.
Very good. Any questions on that item? Next is ordinance 212530, first reading for the zoning of 3734 Spearman Drive to R1.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Same song and dance here, doughnut hole in the city limits that was recently annexed. This neighborhood is zoned R1, so we are seeking R1 zoning for this property.
Very good. Any questions for the item? Next, resolution 646821, a first reading for conditional use of a pet grooming and boarding facility with outdoor runs, play areas to include onsite vet care.
Yes, Mr. President. We have the Pet Paradise that is looking to locate on Tattersall Boulevard near Greystone Way. Have the site map located on the overhead. This particular project would occupy a little over two acres along Tattersall Boulevard, just south, southwest of the existing pump station. It's located along Greystone Way. This particular property did go through Planning Commission, and we have a number of conditions that were placed on as a recommendation to this body, and those, those conditions should be in the resolution.
Very good. I know Mr. Beevers is here tonight. Mr. Beevers, will you be with us Monday night as well? Very good. If we could maybe go into a little more depth Monday night, that'd be great for our first reading to give us time to prepare for it before the vote on the 21st. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Martin tonight? Otherwise, we can dig a little deeper on Monday. Thank you, sir. And finally, ordinance number 21-2532, to amend the zoning ordinance, revision to Article 7. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. President. This particular amendment would take the PRD planned residential district and add community buildings as a conditional use within that district. As of right now, we do permit conditional use for community buildings in our planned unit developments. Planned residential districts, kind of first cousin of our planned unit developments, they are meant to be largely residential, but they are master-planned communities. And with that being the case, the, any kind of amenities, including potentially community buildings, would be incorporated into that master plan. And so with that extra level of, of planning effort that takes place, the extra bit of vetting for community building as part of the amenity package, we feel comfortable with proceeding with allowing those as conditional uses, which would mean they would go back to the Planning Commission and this, and this council, should there be a community building contemplated as part of a master plan PRD development.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Martin on that? That brings us to the end of the agenda. Any items for discussion from members of the body tonight? Mayor Bucato has a distinguished guest. Mayor, would you introduce us to the young lady, please?
She's a 10th grader at Hoover High School and has quite an interest in government and wanted to come and just see how we operate and had, she spent the last hour and a, hour and a half with me, and we've been able to go over the, our operation and just government in general, and we're glad to have our young students visiting us like that and, and seeing that they have an interest in how we do things.
Mayor, we're honored you would visit with the city council. You're always welcome here. Thank you so much for visiting with us.
Mr. President?
Sir?
I'd like to remind everybody that Monday, 4:30 here at City Hall on 3rd floor lobby, Caitlin McTeer, who is Ms. Hoover 2020, will be having her send-off as she tries out for Miss Alabama. So general public is welcome to be here at 4:30 to send her off.
I've often found some of the greatest photo ops are with Ms. Hoover's, so I encourage you to come and take advantage of that.